Good morning. Welcome to the Commission Regular Meeting. Today's Thursday, August 14th, 2014. Time is now nine o'clock. We're in the Tiger Point Community Center in beautiful facility. It's a gorgeous day. Do we have Dr. Burnett with us from the Midway Baptist Church, sir? If you would please, sir, would you come to the microphone and lead us in the invocation?
I've got a green light. All right, come on. Heavenly Father, we come into this place today. Help us to be aware of God of all that we say and do is in your presence. Lord, our nation is in great distress. It's not life as usual. All around this world, things are falling apart and in our very land. I ask you, oh God, that you would bless these leaders. I thank you, Lord, in your wisdom that you have established government, but also, Lord, you told us how? That righteousness exalts a nation, but that corrupt leaders will bring it to destruction. So, Lord, I ask you that you will help us to be truthful. Lord, I would ask you, oh God, that any lies that are spoken, may they be swiftly judged. May truth be spoken, integrity lived, and, oh God, that you would bring blessing through all. These men need wisdom. Grant them heavenly wisdom, which is first pure than peaceable, and grant them courage to do what is right and not what is convenient. Thank you so much for all that you've done in our nation, in our lives, and, oh Lord, we ask you, oh God, to show yourself strong. In Jesus' name, amen. God bless you, gentlemen.
Mr. Salter, I believe it's your turn with the pledge. Thank you very much. Next up is the approval of the minutes of the July 22nd, 2014 Special Meetings, the Budget Workshops. Those are in your back up. Unless there are questions, I recommend approval without objection. Here none, it passes. Will approval of the agenda? I'll begin on the right. Commissioner Williamson, do you have any additions?
Mr. Chairman, I have no further additions. I did want to say Commissioner Lynchard, this is a beautiful facility and congratulations as the first time I've been in it.
Mr. Chairman, no additions, and I would ask Commissioner Lynchard for gas reimbursement, please.
Commissioner Cole.
No additions.
Commissioner Lynchard.
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
Anything on the gas reimbursement?
We can talk about that later. That street goes both ways.
Mr. Walker.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would note that item number 11 had been added since your committee meeting, which is a proposal in the amount of $10,500 to replace a large scanner, printer scanner in the engineering that we'll pay forward from capital account.
Okay, we make note of the fact that is news from Monday.
No additions.
Mr. Blaylock.
Yes, I left on the table for each commissioner a recommendation on item number two with the engineer's report relating to the Villa Venise Canal dredging project.
Okay, sir, do all the commissioners have that? All right, thank you. Ms. Bell? Mr. Gomian? All right, we will have a proclamation. We've approved the agenda. We have a proclamation here for Purple Hearts, and I thought it was most appropriate for Commissioner Salter to handle this. He's a Vietnam veteran. 173rd was one of the most beat up battered units in Vietnam. He's a holder of Bronze Star and three extra devices for several other commendations, and so I have asked him if he would do the county the honor of the designation of a Purple Heart County. Commissioner Salter, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm honored today to read this proclamation on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners and all the citizens of Santa Rosa County. This is something that we've been working on for quite some time, and I think it's very appropriate that we do this at this time. County of Santa Rosa proclamation, whereas a Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration still in present use and was initially created by George Washington in 1782 as a badge of military merit, whereas a Purple Heart was the first American service award made available to the common soldier and is awarded to any member of the United States Armed Services wounded or killed in combat with a declared enemy of the United States, and whereas the organization now known as the Military Order of the Purple Heart was formed in 1932 for the protection and mutual interest of all who have received the decoration composed exclusively of Purple Heart recipients. The Military Order of the Purple Heart is the only veterans' service organization comprised strictly of combat wounded veterans, and whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, chartered by the Act of Congress, is to foster an environment of goodwill among combat wounded veteran members and their families to promote patriotism, to support related legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure we never forget the sacrifices made by those so decorated, and whereas there have been many former Santa Rosa residents who made the ultimate sacrifice in giving their lives in the cause of freedom, and there are numerous combat wounded veterans currently residing in the county and as Purple Heart awardees who contribute to their county in countless ways, and whereas the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Chapter 566, is named honoring First Lieutenant Sharon Lane, the only Army nurse killed June 8th, 1969, in the service of her country in Vietnam as a direct result of enemy fire, and whereas Santa Rosa County falls within the purview of Chapter 566 of the Military Order of the Purple Heart and wishes to pledge its strong support for this noble organization and for those who put their lives at risk in service of their country and their fellow citizens, now therefore it be proclaimed by the County of Santa Rosa, Florida, that honor and gratitude be bestowed upon the Military Order of the Purple Heart, Sharon Lane, Chapter 566, recognizing the County of Santa Rosa as a Purple Heart County in the state of Florida adopted this 14th day of August, 2014, Board of County Commissioners, Santa Rosa County, Florida, signed by our Chairman Jim Melvin. Thank you all. Mr. Chairman, we have with us today several Purple Heart recipients. We have the Commander, Mr. Norman N. Chapman, Jr. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. It's just with great humbleness that we accept the fact that you are becoming a Purple Heart County, and in recognition of that, we would like to give you a plaque from us thanking you for what you have done for the veterans here in Santa Rosa County, and it reads, "The Military Order of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to Santa Rosa County for your dedication and support honoring Americans' combat wounded veterans, becoming a Purple Heart County." Presented by the Patriots of Sharon Lane, Sharon A. Lane, Chapter 566 Military Order of the Purple Heart. Thank you very much.
Chief, I always want to tell the police, chief, what you did.
Don't come along very humble. Oh, yeah. Thanks, sir. Thank you. Thank you. That's a treasure.
Mr. Chairman, if you will, at this time, another member of the Purple Heart Association, Colonel Washington, you'd like to make some comments? Army.
(inaudible).
Turn your mic on. Okay, I'm sorry.
(inaudible). I'm watching this thing from the ocean floor. I always glad that it's my home, so, county, from Jackson High School, I'm just there with you, but quickly, as a, or Colonel, getting on, having up in the, servicing, so, I'm one of the ones. Pride of it, and I just want to say very quickly that, that, my job has been very better. As a father, it's a matter of course, it's a struggle hard. Now I serve as chairman of a lot of veterans' foundation. Foundation, I could, one of my wife who was, one of this was, well, I mean, I mean, my own has been by the lady, I mean, has been eight down there in the prison. Has served as, has, president of the, of the, seven states.
But anyway, what I wanted to do was to introduce to you, and I passed out a flyer, is a program that the foundation, which I run, is doing. We've got some flyers, and on the back of it, it says that the legislators voted in a bill, statute now, that allow the foundation to erect a memorial at the Capitol, which will be in front of the House, and we also have the right to do a Walk of Honors. This Walk of Honor will be these bricks that will be able to be installed at the Capitol in memory or in honor of a veteran in his service, in a war, going all the way back to the Civil War. So this is an honor that our veterans will get a chance to have a piece of the Capitol area, and I want you to know about it, so that's what I'm here to tell you, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colonel. And here again, the Purple Heart Medal is probably the one that you don't want.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate that so many have received it and paid the ultimate price for our country, so I just want to remind everyone, too, in our Santa Rosa County Veterans Memorial Plaza up on Blackwater River, we have a Purple Heart monument within the monument itself, so we appreciate everything you've done. Also, there's somebody else I'd like to recognize today. We have one of the few survivors of the Ground Zero attack on 9/11, and that's Mr. Rick DeSanto. Rick, would you stand up, please? What a horrendous attack on our great country, so thank you for being with us today. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my proclamation, or our proclamation.
Thank you, Commissioner Salter. We'll have a public hearing at 9:30. That public hearing will be for the purpose of an ordinance imposing a local governmental infrastructure sales, uh, surtax in Santa Rosa County for construction of a courthouse. Until that point in time, we'll move on into the agenda. We cannot start before 9:30, but anytime after 9:30, it's legal to discuss that. Economic Development, Commissioner Salter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items. First is recommend acquisition of conservation easement on 46.3 acres for an appraised value of $310,000 adjacent to Naval Air Station Whitingfield from East Gate LLC utilizing Florida Defense Infrastructure Grant and U.S. Navy Readiness and Environmental Protection Integration REPI funding. On Monday, there were some questions about the nature trail easement and I believe some access questions, and I'll ask the county attorney, Mr. Roy Andrews, to discuss those two issues.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Young, the principal of East Gate LLC, has agreed to grant an easement for the nature trail, the hiking trail, and has agreed to provide an access across the property placed in the conservation easement for the remaining property. There was an issue in regard to the Navy's draft restrictive easement, that it would not allow usage of the property for passive recreational purposes other than for the grantors, family and invitees. I understand that discussions with the Navy, and I think Mr. Roy is here today, are such that they are willing to agree to remove that restriction from the covenant, and that was really the only issue. We'll have to put the documents together going forward, but we are in agreement.
Mr. Roy, name and address, please.
Is it still on?
Yeah.
Randy Roy, Whitingfield. As Roy alluded to, the restrictive easement is very restrictive, and it does have passive recreational use outlined in there, and basically for the grantor and his family and invitees. Speaking to our folks at Jacksonville, again, it's a draft template, and each property offers its own opportunities, and obviously, sometimes a property owner might not just want one 4,000 square foot house on a property, so sometimes there's a negotiation, and that happens to affect the appraisal and so on and so forth. This would be a negligible effect from what I'm hearing from our folks, and we've been supporting that Office Greenways Trail Initiative since inception, like in 2003 and even before that, about actually linking the Blackwater Heritage Trail around the base and kind of going up along the east side. As I think Vernon Compton also stated is that this is the last link of the property actually to allow that whole eastern edge to happen, so we don't have a problem with it. Actually, I sent Roy some emails yesterday, basically stating in, I think it's in paragraph five, where it talks about passive recreational, maybe adding in there that obviously a future easement from the property owner to the county, whatever it may be for that easement to allow this track, or even in the last part of the easement, there is permitted uses where a gentleman or lady, whoever owns the property, may submit a, an exception to use, 90 days submission, basically giving us notification, making sure it's okay, and it didn't do anything that would, basically what we're trying to do is not impact the footprint and put people in harm's way or impact the ability to do the mission. So, as he alluded to, there's room in there, and it's certainly going to be worked. Anything else?
Any questions from the board? Mr. Chairman, with the understanding that there will be an agreed upon easement for the Greenway and trails, I will move approval of the acquisition without objection.
Okay, sir, do you want to do that before the speaker that's queued up? She's right behind Randy, you may not be able to see her.
Before Ms. Mahoot comes up, I would offer to you, and maybe in the end of September, October, when a lot of the action and a lot of the meetings are happening, maybe I'll come back up here and we'll do an actual disorientation of what our encroaching partnering program is, how big it is, how much of a footprint is enough, and what the whole vision and focus is, so it can basically put it out there for public input and also for some feedback. I think it would help a lot. So I'll offer that, and I'll get together with you.
I think that'd be a great idea, and for those in the room today who may not know what we're talking about, for the last 10 years, the county's been partnering with Navy Naval Air Station Whitingfield in the state of Florida to acquire conservation easements, in some cases outright land purchases around Whitingfield, especially up on those fence lines, to help buffer that base from incompatible development, especially in the accident potential zones. We've acquired about 3,000 acres over the last 10 years. It's very important that we do that to protect that base from encroachment, because there will be another base closure sometime in the future, and encroachment is the number one issue that causes bases to close, so we've been diligently working to make sure that base is well buffered.
Thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Wallace, name and address.
Wallace Mahoot, 5500 Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I know that at a special meeting December 9th, 2010, Mr. Andrews represented LLC, well, East Gate LLC, in getting the zoning changed. Will that in any way cause a conflict of interest for the county?
Mr. Chairman, I believe on Monday, Mr. Andrews disclosed that relationship back when he was in private practice, so my opinion is no, since he has disclosed it.
Well, and it's typically misunderstood about the practice law. I'm not an attorney, but I was raised by attorneys. Just because they represent you, that means you needed a lawyer, and they are one, and he had a price for his services and you paid it, and that's all it means. There's no emotional attachment to the issue. They're employed to advocate for their client, and they do that to the very best of their ability. So he now is employed to advocate for the interests of Santa Rosa County, and he will do that to the very best of his ability.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman, hearing no one else, here again, I would move approval of the acquisition with the understanding of the easement for the Greenway and Trail without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next, recommend submission of application for 2015 Florida Defense Task Force Grant in the amount of $50,000 for demolition and removal, or removal, of structure, structures located immediately west of NAS Whitingfield Main Gate to improve security at the base entrance. A few months ago, the county worked with a willing land seller and the Navy. We acquired a very ugly piece of property right at the main entrance to the Whitingfield, had an old car wash on it. It was causing some security issues at Whiting, so the county acquired it. There is an APZ out over it, so what we're going to try to do now is get a Florida Defense Grant to tear that old car wash building down, clear that lot, install a security fence to help the appearance and the security of NAS Whitingfield. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just note that the, it's going to be probably closer to, it's going to be probably closer to $40,000, and it will require a 50% match, so it'll be $20,000 in the grant, $20,000 for the local match, and we would use the REPI proceeds that we have for that. But it's closer to, when we put together the estimate, they were just trying to give you the worst case.
Commissioner Cole, you got a comment?
Yeah, clarification, does this include, the price include the fencing and the security, or is this just demolition?
I believe it should, it includes the fencing, too.
Right, because it seemed a little high on just the demolition.
Right.
All right, we'll go out to bid on this?
Yes, absolutely. They just used the estimates that had gotten on the last perimeter fencing that we did at the Aviation Park on the last grant.
Thank you.
Yes, you'll have to bid it.
Any other questions? Hearing none, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the recommendation of the submission of application without objection.
Here none, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Next item is the Administrative Committee. We have 12 items. Again, I'll just reiterate that item number 11 is new from Monday. Item number one is discussion of three resolutions providing for non-binding referendum on three separate sites for proposed judicial facility. Mr. Walker, would you please?
In your packet, or the, based on the discussions from Monday, and Mr. Andrews had crafted the three referendums that you see for the, including the P Ridge site, the site adjacent to the courthouse, and also the Byram Property Site east of State Road 87 and west of, east of the river and west of 87. So you see what the wording is, Mr. Andrews had placed in there. Also, we've included the approximate cost estimate that HOK had developed. They just used the estimates that had gotten on the last perimeter fencing that we did at the Aviation Park on the last grant.
Thank you.
Yes, you'll have to bid it.
Any other questions? Hearing no, Mr. Chairman, I would move approval of the recommendation of the submission of application without objection.
Hearing no, it passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Next item is the Administrative Committee. We have 12 items. Again, I'll just reiterate that item number 11 is new from Monday. Item number one is discussion of three resolutions providing for non-binding referendum on three separate sites for proposed judicial facility. Mr. Walker, would you please?
In your packet, or based on the discussions from Monday, and Mr. Andrews had crafted the three referendums that you see for the, including the P Ridge site, the site adjacent to the courthouse, and also the Byram Property Site east of State Road 87 and west of, east of the river and west of 87. So, you see what the wording is, Mr. Andrews had placed in there also. We've included the approximate cost estimate that HOK had developed and presented to you Monday.
I would like to just add one thing before I yield the floor to Commissioner Lynch. I was going to ask you, Commissioner Lynch, to tie back that discussion we had Monday. There was a great deal of concern about, and confusion about the non-binding character of the referendum versus the language that authorized the sales tax. If you'd do that again, I'd appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that's why I was reaching for my speak button. The confusion, and I do want to clarify this, you know, the item on the agenda references a non-binding referendum for location, and that's because of the way that we have to put referendums on the ballot. Straw polls are non-binding according to statute, so that's why it's worded that way. The sales tax referendum that is associated with this item that will be on the ballot is tied to a particular location that is approved by the referendum. So, the two items are linked. We can't impose the sales tax and spend that money to build a courthouse at any location other than that which is approved by the non-binding referendum. So, while it is a non-binding referendum as to the location question, once you couple it with the sales tax referendum, it becomes binding on this board. So, regardless of the fact that it says non-binding referendum, it's tied into the sales tax vote, so that if people approve the sales tax, we can only levy that sales tax to build the courthouse at the location that was approved in the non-binding referendum. So, in effect, it becomes a binding decision of the people.
Thank you, Commissioner Lynch. We appreciate that clarification, because frankly, it had me a bit confused as well. I recommend approval of this item number one, discussion of three resolutions, without objection.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one thing to Commissioner Lynch.
Yes, sir.
As good faith, I would be happy if we drafted something that said with a 5-0 vote, and also with our signatures, that if the sales tax does pass, that we go with the site that gets the most votes. I'll gladly do that, just as a measure of good faith to the board.
Sure, and the sunset provision as well, because all five of us have obligated ourselves to the public to sunset this debt when the structure's paid for. So, we can do that. Do we need to do that with a separate? Okay.
You should do that with a separate motion.
I'll make that item 1B. Item 1A is the resolution. I recommend approval without objection.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East. How much of the 1 cent sales tax is actually going to go toward the building fund? The whole 1 cent is not going to go, right?
100% will go towards the, I'm sorry, can't be spent for anything other than the judicial facility.
I was under the impression, I was led to believe, that there was a certain percentage that's going to go to several different places and not the entire thing to the building.
No, ma'am, you were misinformed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Yes, sir, Commissioner.
Ms. Cantu, what you may have heard is that each municipality, the city of Milton, the city of Jay, and the city of Gulf Breeze are entitled to their portion of that 1 cent sales tax that they may or may not obligate to the judicial center. I will, you know, do my best to encourage that those municipalities put that money into that project, because they, of course, will certainly benefit from it and use that project, you know, use the courthouse the same as the rest of us.
So, do the taxpayers have any way of getting an agreement from those organizations that they're going to?
I believe those agreements.
Through your Board of Commissioners.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I believe there's already been secured by the staff. All right. 1B is, you want to restate that, Commissioner Williamson?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion that, in a measure of good faith, that we, our attorney come up with some type of documentation that we can sign, and that we also, with a 5-0 vote, say that if the sales tax passes, whichever site receives the most votes and is chosen by the general public is the site that we will choose.
Sure. And Mr. Andrews, would you take care of that for us?
Yes, sir.
All right. Did you, is that in form of a motion, Commissioner Williamson?
Yes, sir.
And without objection?
I'd like to move for approval without objection.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Through the chair, Commissioner Williamson, are we going to add that same caveat of the sunset with that motion?
Yes, I mean, I believe we definitely need to sunset this thing as soon as it's paid off. Yes, sir. So, I'd add that into the motion.
Okay, and the motion's made without objection. Hearing no, it passes. The attorney will prepare that for the five signatures, stating that it's for the construction of the courthouse and that it sunsets upon completion of the retirement of the debt. All right, item number two is discussion, I'm sorry, we just dealt with, no, we just got rid of item number one, A and B. Item number two is, yes, thank you, it's time, this is a good place to catch that public hearing. We'll go into a public hearing at this time. Time is 9:34, and we're opening a public hearing for the purpose of a hearing on the ordinance imposing a local government infrastructure sales tax, infrastructure sales surtax in Santa Rosa County for construction of the courthouse. Mr. Andrews, is there anything you want to add to this? I think everybody understands what we're doing, but just.
The issue in regard to this one, I think, is that the district, the fire district boundaries are not co-extent.
This courthouse.
Oh, excuse me, the public hearing on the courthouse, sorry. The, the, the sales tax referendum language is pretty much established by statute. We have, or we've advertised and proposed a statute that meets that requirement. It has a general description of the courthouse facility. It provides that the term of the local option sales tax is four years, and that's essentially the basis of it. The statute requires a majority, and the form of the ballot has to have a for the 1 cent sales tax, or against 1 cent sales tax.
And this is the mandatory public hearing for that?
Right.
Is there anybody in the public wish to speak to this issue? Yes, sir. No, it's not, Jim.
There we go. Jim Young, 5049 Basin Avenue. The only question I have in the language on the referendum for the 1 cent sales tax is, is the four-year term. I know the language, the wording of the referendum is governed by Florida statute. The timeframe is not. It's whatever you agree to, is my understanding. I tried to read the statute last night, and I am not even a recovering attorney, but I, so, and my concern is this, is with projections of sales tax revenues at 1 cent additional, being in the 10 to 12 million dollar per annum range, that a four-year language may push or be inadequate for reduce, for the extinguishing of the debt, or in other words, to pay for the building, which would require, as my understanding, you would have to forecast that and either have a special election, or you'd have to forecast it to the scheduled election. So, you'd have to kind of know two years in advance whether that, those funds were going to be enough, and you'd have to go back to the voters, because sales tax referendums must be approved by the voting public. I don't think anybody's in favor of going back a second time, and if you have, and who knows what the economy may be like in these times that we're in, up and down, so whether those forecasts are accurate or not, you know, my recommendation or suggestion would be to make sure that you've got an adequate time, which is your best calculation plus some contingency factor. You know, as an example, if you had a six-year timeframe on the sales tax, but with sunsetting at the extinguishment of the debt, and you had a, in a perfect world, in a dynamic world, you had 12 million dollars a year coming in, obviously, you've got adequate time, yet it would also be sunsetted well before the seven years. Now, I also understand the point Commissioner Lynch had made, that if that intersection of extinguishing of debt and revenue, or tax revenue, happened in June, the tax must be levied from January 1st of a year to December 31st. So, in that example I just gave, you would have an excess of funds relative to the extinguishing of the debt, if it happened midterm. That would be a nice problem to have. What I'm trying to do is avoid the opposite of that. We have a four-year timeframe in the tax referendum. You raise 40 million dollars, or 45 million dollars, which is inadequate based on HOK's forecasting for needs, then what are you going to do? You've got to come back to the public with another referendum, if my understanding of the statute is correct. And I'm just trying to avoid that happening. I believe in the sunset, you know, as assurance to the voters, that when the bills are paid, it's over, except to the extent of the actual timeframe it comes. If it extinguishes within the January 1, December 31 timeframe, the tax would continue to the December 31 of that year. But I think it's, I just don't want to see you guys ended up in that position. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, and we discussed that some Monday, and I don't know how we fix that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I know that this tax has to start on January the 1st, state statute. Are we sure that it has to go to December 31st of the year? I thought there was some type 60-day notice that you can give to sunset.
The, it says, "No discretionary sales surtax shall take effect on a date other than January 1. No discretionary sales surtax shall terminate on a day other than December 31." That's in Florida Statute 212.054.
Okay, thank you. And if I can just add, I grew up in a family that something we were taught from an early age was fiscal responsibility. I followed my father's footsteps in business. I followed it into public service. The last thing that you generally hear Williamson talk about is wanting more taxes, wanting taxes for a longer time. But looking at this, I think that we need to go with a five-year instead of a four-year. And if you'll just hear me out, we've got a 50 million dollar project that we're working on. I work in construction. That's what we're estimating this thing to cost. Nothing ever costs in construction what you estimate from the very beginning to cost. Just say we added 10%, 55 million dollars that this project is going to cost. We're saying that it's a 12 million dollar a year revenue, 12 to 13. I think that the budget reger feels better, more comfortable with 12 million a year. At four years, we're looking at 48, so right there is 7 million dollars. You also have to look at interest on the project of finishing this. I know we're going to accrue some taxes before we start spending a lot of money, so we're not going to have to, you know, have a 50 million dollar note where we have interest on 50 million dollars over five years. But there are going to be some type, some times in this project where we're going to have to take money, whether it be 5 million, 8 million, 10 million. There's going to be some interest that's accrued. Say that number is 2 million dollars. Right there, 57 million is now where we are. If we only bring in 48, we're left holding a bag, and it needs to be filled with 9 million dollars. As somebody who is fiscally responsible, I can already read the paper tomorrow that the young Commissioner Williamson is wanting to put his hands in the taxpayers' pockets for another year, but that's not what this is about. I believe that is being fiscally responsible for us to move it to five years. I think it's the safety of our community. If we're going to have to pull 9 million dollars out of the end of a project, where do we take it from? Do we take it from our general revenue? And if we do, what happens if we have a storm? There's so many speculations in this project of what it's going to cost, what it might not cost. There's assumptions that are being made, and what if there's a storm in Texas and the labor force goes to Texas? That's going to make the cost of this project rise for us. What if China starts buying more copper? That's going to make copper costs go up, and that's electrical, that's, there's many different trades that copper prices drive up. So, we really need to look at this in the long run, and I don't want to go to the taxpayers for any longer than we need to, but I couldn't sleep at night knowing that at the end of this project, that I didn't bring this up or didn't say it, even if it's not the popular thing to say, but I couldn't sleep at night knowing that I didn't do my due diligence. I think for the safety of our community, we need to go for five years, and we need to make sure we pay this thing off with the least amount of interest, and that we get it paid off completely without holding a bag, looking for 5 million, 10 million dollars at the end of it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Point's well made, and it's a sticky wicket. I don't know how we're going to work around it. If we can't terminate the tax, I mean, if.
We can have a language in the ordinance that says that it will terminate early. This board in the future, or your successors, can take action to terminate the tax if it's no longer necessary. The four-year provision in the draft ordinance was put in place, actually by my predecessor, but it was put in place before we had any of the HOK estimates. We had really no, you know, that was, as Ms. Jones told me, that's just a placeholder, because at that time, there was no understanding as to what the real cost would be.
I see. Well, this is a time and place to fix a placeholder. I think it behooves us to give careful consideration to the comments we've heard. Given the fact that we can, our boards, future boards can curtail the tax if the debt is extinguished ahead of time, I think that would be prudent, but I'd like to hear from the rest of the board.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with what I heard from Commissioner Williamson and what I heard from the public. I think some things that may help the general public feel more comfortable with that is, just as we did earlier, and we're willing to sign a piece of paper that Commissioner Williamson presented, we should also add to that possible, with board approval, that we put a caveat, you know, make a statement in there that every month, or every, at least every three months quarterly, that we provide through county accessibility or internet site where we are in collections versus what the debt service remains. So, the public always has an eyeball, just like we should, on where that debt service remains. The other thing we can put in there is a promise to the people of Santa Rosa County that if, in the fourth year, third month, we've done well, the debt service is paid in full, that the balance of that year that we have to collect according to statute will not go into general funds, but will go into a pot, let's call it, because everybody always says it's in a different pot, we can't use it, put it in a pot, and that any expenditures that come from that pot would be voted on by this Board of Commissioners and very possibly have to be approved by the citizens of Santa Rosa County. If there's no way of returning that money, then assure them that it just won't roll over into general revenue, it won't roll into a pet project, it won't roll into anything other than what we have public discussions on and meetings on prior to that difference in expenditures, if there's any being spent.
And Mr. Andrews, I understand that we can terminate the tax early.
The board is not restricted in taking future actions. I think that as far as these, the funding, since the only project that's identified for this local option sales tax is the courthouse, I don't think that you're really going to have any discretion to spend it on something else.
Yeah, right.
Right. So, I mean, it's not going to be a situation where.
Just a moment, please.
It's not going to be a situation where you can vote to divert these funds to something else.
I understand. Commissioner Lynch first, and then Commissioner Cole.
Just wanted to clarify, Mr. Andrews said that the board could terminate the discretionary sales tax early, but we would have to terminate it as of December 31st of a particular year.
Okay, Commissioner Cole.
And therein lies the problem, because we don't know if in the fourth year, second month, or fourth year, 12th. month or fourth year twelfth month, that the, the bill will be paid in full. So there's gotta be states or other counties that have had this similar situation. What does it, where do the tax dollars go? If, if by statute they have to be used in the judicial facility, where does the excess go?
I think any, any excess would go into a reserve for maintenance and, and capital upkeep on the judicial facility itself.
And that's fine.
Still be, still be earmarked for expenditures on the courthouse.
And that's fine, Mr., you know, our county attorney administrator and obviously you and a few of the board members know that, but who we're trying to sell this to is the public that, that, and that's why I'm making these comments, so.
Commissioner, uh, Salter.
Mr. Chairman, I concur with, uh, Commissioner Williamson. I had the same concern. I think, uh, anytime you're basing something on the economy, uh, you gotta be very careful. So I support the five-year.
Then, uh, we'll modify the discussion of the term from four to five years with the consent of the board and with the understanding of the public that, uh, the funds generated by this sales tax are already earmarked, and there's no special accounting procedures that need to be gone through to protect them because state of Florida's already stamped them, and, uh, they will go in, uh, everything, and just for correction, clarification, everything goes through the general fund. That's the starting point for everything. So it'll go into the general fund and move from there into a special fund for the maintenance and upkeep of the courthouse until they're-
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, Mr. Andrews, is there anything, as far as this, this is a public hearing that we set at the last meeting, is there anything that we need to do instead of public hearing, say, in at a five-year? Because this public hearing that we set today was for four years, as, you know, I wanna make sure we go through the proper process, so nothing can bite us in the long run.
The, you only read the ordinance once. It's, this is the public hearing where the ordinance is, is drafted or, or is finalized. So which, what the action that you take today is appropriate.
Okay, so if we do action that moves from four to five, um, it, it, it suffices that we set this public hearing, that was, this was just a general, um, resolution or, or ordinance that we have as far as four-year, but we can change it to five and not have to do-
Yes.
Right here, we can, yeah. All right, uh, then with the permission of the board, I'll modify the, uh, the, uh, ordinance just, or propose that we vote to modify the ordinance to change the term from, uh, four years to five years, and, uh, we will go ahead and, uh, tee that up, and, uh, then we'll hear the rest of the public comments, uh, if that's the pleasure of the board. Okay. I don't see anybody disagreeing, so we will, uh, hold this, uh, for the discussion, but I intend to, uh, recommend that we approve this without objection, uh, as read and discussed by the attorney, with the exception that we're gonna modify it to, to a five-year term, uh, with the understanding that, uh, these are earmarked funds to start with, and that the, any residual funds, should there be any residual funds, will be dedicated to the courthouse and the maintenance of the courthouse, et cetera, until they're expended. Uh, name and address for the record, please, sir.
Scott Camp, five-five-two-five Hummingberg Court, Gulf Breeze, Florida, three-two-five-six-three. Uh, wow, I was gonna make this short, and you guys just blew it wide open. Uh, first off, going back to Mr. Cole, uh, you made a statement earlier about the penny, penny sales tax, that not all the communities are required to, you know, give that penny as they collect to this? Is that what you were saying? Or did I get lost?
No, I, my statement was, is surely another community has had this dilemma where a sales tax would be re-
No, this was in the previous discussion when-
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Ms. Cantu, you were following up Ms. Cantu's comments that-
The municipalities, Gulf Breeze, Jay, and Milton, get their fair share of that one-cent sales tax.
Mm-hmm.
They are not required by any statute to put it towards the courthouse. However, we, you know, we have a memorandum of understanding, I believe, with those municipalities, or certainly we should, if it's not already established, that because they're gonna use the courthouse also, that I feel that that should go into that, that, you know, it all should go into that copper.
There are two, uh, allowances for distribution of the sales tax proceeds. One is a statutory formula, um, which is based upon the, uh, the population and, uh, of the counties and the municipalities, uh, in a fairly complex, um, um, division. There are estimates that, uh, are promulgated by the Department of Revenue, which apply to each county and municipality, um, and, um, that's the basis for what we're doing right now. There can also be an inter-local agreement between the municipalities and, um, the county that will vary how that is distributed, but that requires inter-local agreement with the municipalities, and there is nothing, nothing in place at this time. There can be an agreement, but there's, but there's not an agreement at this point. The approximate amounts of, um, based on the, the Department of Revenue's, um, uh, figures and, and Ms. Bell has, and can get them better, better to you, but it's about seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for the city of Milton, four-hundred-and-eighty-thousand for, um, Gulf Breeze, and forty-some-thousand dollars for Jay.
Uh, may I interject here, Mr. Andrews? Uh, Mr. Walker, I was under the impression that we were already staffing that issue with the, with the various mayors. Where are we with that?
No, so we've never, we have never talked to the, the municipalities about-
We need to make that job one beginning as soon as we get out of here, uh, and, and nail that down. That's, that's a shingle flapping in the wind.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a second. Lay a minute for me.
Let me, yes, please, thank you. Is that, there's never been a part of the, uh, uh, local option sales tax for the courthouse. I mean, even when it was done in, uh, early two thousand, uh, they did not have an inter-local agreement on, on the courthouse.
I understand that. We're, we're not worried about two thousand now. We're worried about two thousand and fourteen. Uh, okay, sir.
We'll approach the, we'll be, we'll approach it.
We're approaching with that. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cole.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I, I knew we hadn't had that discussion yet, and, uh, you know, that's one of the items that the city of Milton is offering as part of the incentive for staying downtown, uh, you know, and, and I recognize that, but I, I certainly think we need to enter those discussions immediately because, just like I say, you know, everybody's gonna use this courthouse, whether it's the city of Gulf Breeze resident or wherever. So I feel it's only fair that those municipalities come on board with this.
And that was the basis for my misunderstanding, because I clearly understood that the mayor of Milton had made that very clear to us in the meeting. All right. Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, Mr. Chairman, and I think, see, and that goes to the whole issue of openness. Now, and it, and it goes to, you know, I don't believe anybody right here, you know, just left that out, but we've been talking about this for a year plus, and now, just today, we find out that there is an op, you know, an, you know, an opportunity for these people to opt out. And that doesn't include what the next mayor, the next city, you know, municipality, county, you know, council, you know, might vote to do. So that was my, you know, since that was brought up, I just wanted to follow that up, and I appreciate that. Uh, Mr. Williamson, you said, great business idea. I mean, you're talking, you're absolutely right. You're talking about price, and another thing I did, you didn't leave out was the scope growth. I've never seen a project come off the ground and finish exactly as it started. So you can guarantee that no matter what you've had on plans today, uh, especially for the interior of the facility, that between now and then, you know, somebody's gonna want a different office, somebody's gonna want a, you know, projector, somebody's gonna want this and that. It's all part of doing business. And again, I'm not sure all that was added in from listening to the HOK, uh, briefing on Monday. So I think you bring a great point there, Chair.
The, the furnishings, et cetera.
Right.
I think you made the statement.
Yeah, the furnishings were covered, but what I'm talking about is, you know, there's always that, like I say, the growth that you don't expect. Okay. Which just goes back to the, you know, Mr. The Commissioner's, uh, Williamson's, uh, comments that, you know, we don't know, you know, what's gonna happen with the, you know, anything in the future. So, uh, I will state on the record, as you guys, as you gentlemen know, that I am for the sales tax because we have to have a courthouse, period. I mean, that's just a no-brainer. So, but, you know, we start talking about these kind of things, and then all at once today, now we went from four years to five years. Now the logic that Commissioner Williamson and Commissioner Salter, you know, basically I believe agreed with, was that, you know, to go to five years would guarantee a payoff. Well, that's not gonna guarantee a payoff. That's just gonna get us to the fifty-million dollars if the guesstimate is correct. So it could be six years. It could be, you know. The only thing I ask, you know, I'm gonna ask one thing, that in section three of this contract, that, you know, there will be a statement in there, first off, that says no extension, you know, with no extension, that you guys, whoever the commissioners are at the time, cannot come in and just, you know, say that we're gonna extend this penny sales tax for another two years. So I believe if that was in this agreement, that would make me feel better. And also, on the second part of that, now you, you are all politicians, so you understand the longer you ask for the penny, the less likely you're gonna get anything from, you know, from the voters. So when they go to the poll, we go to the polls on November fourth, or, you know, um, you know, that's just gonna be one of those things. So that's the other part. Uh, you have a comment? Or, okay, the last, uh, issue I had, and I had emailed you gentlemen last night, was on, uh, section eight of this document. And probably need the, uh, county attorney to help me with the, uh, verbiage there. But when I read that, it basically, to me, said that, you know, if any provision of this ordinance or the application thereof, gadda, gadda, is held invalid, the intent of the board is such, uh, to move forward anyway. So what is it, what I'm reading here, that even if the voters turn it down, even if we have a, uh, somebody sues over this issue, that regardless, we're gonna go forward?
Mr. Andrews.
The severability language is, is standard in the, in every ordinance that we have. It, it applies if, if one of the provisions of the ordinance is declared to be unconstitutional, then there can be, which would be the only way that it would be set aside.
Right.
Uh, that, that the remaining provisions of the ordinance, if they are enforceable, would, um, would still apply. It really wouldn't apply in this circumstance. Um, there, there's really, there's no, no individual provision of the ordinance that would, that would, uh, be held to be invalid and, and therefore terminate the, or allow the ordinance to go forward. Uh, and as far as the extension, um, the referendum, if it, if it's for five years, that would be the maximum. It wouldn't be able to be extended by vote of the commission. Would take, um, an additional referendum to do that.
Okay. You gentlemen are on, are all in agreement on that, then, that, that is your intention that if, even if this fails, you are not, have, you don't have any, you know, feelings toward moving forward regardless?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Salter.
Scott, if I remember correctly, to answer your question, no, because whatever the referendum says, that's what the people vote on. If they vote no, then it's done. Uh, we do not have the ability, as we do with Avalorum taxes or gas taxes. We can vote, sometimes supermajority, to raise those. We cannot do that with a sales tax. It has to go before the public for a vote, so if the people vote it down, it's over.
That's the, okay, that's the ans, that's the non-lawyer answer that I was hoping to-
There you go. That's a, that's Shamaka terminology.
Thank you just very much, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Cole.
Scott, while you're there.
Oh, yes.
Another thing I'll assure you personally, uh, if, if the drawings, if the plans for this judicial facility come back where we have anything but the type of floors you're seeing here and the type of construction you're seeing here, where, you know, these concrete floors will last a long time, and basically, you know, it's good and solid, it'll last a long time, that's what I'm looking for in keeping this cost down. Uh, these floors don't have to be tile floors, carpeted floors. A particular area would require a carpeted floor for a, a good reason, and perhaps I'd be, you know, inclined to approve that, but I want staff in HOK and Hatchmont-McDonald and everybody to know that I, I personally wanna see the most and best use of our dollars.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Board, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Yes, sir. Name and address.
Matthew Hargrave, seven-zero-seven-four Milton Court, Milton, Florida. Thank you, Commissioner Williamson, for, uh, making your motion that, that actually really kind of addresses what I was going to say this morning, when I was at the committee meeting this Monday, and, uh, HOK came back with their new cost numbers. Uh, I immediately in my head was doing the math for the proposed four years, uh, and it just didn't add up to what these new numbers are for HOK. So I, I thank Commissioner Williamson for making that motion. I thank the, the board for, uh, following through with that, uh, because it is fiscally responsible. We do need, uh, to make sure that this courthouse is fully funded, uh, and that it happens without any need for any, any future comeback on, on funding measures, uh, you know, four years in the future, if, if that was the case. But I, I appreciate the board's moving forward on the five years, and I think that highlights the importance of getting this done now. Uh, if you look back at the last time this courthouse was put before the public for funding in, uh, two thousand and two, the cost was extremely different. Uh, it was much lower then, and that is the way of, of most things. They get more expensive over time. Uh, and so I, I think that just highlights to the board, I think the board recognizes this, but I think the public, uh, should look at this very carefully, too, as this issue is debated in the, uh, for the upcoming election, and that is, we need this to happen now, because it's going to happen at some point. At some point, the Supreme Court of the state of Florida is gonna step in and make this happen, uh, regardless of, of what the public says, the court can order this to happen. And so the public needs to look very carefully, what's the cost gonna be now, what's it gonna be five years down the road, ten years down the road, fifteen years down the road? You know, we, we look, just a month ago, we had a cost estimate from HOK at a certain level for site construction costs. A month later, they come back, and it's doubled for each location. Uh, and we've requested those numbers to, to look at the detailed itemization of how that has broken down, but that should just emphasize to all of us, things get more expensive over time. Let's make this happen. The local option sales tax is the fairest way to do it. It allows outside sources to help contribute towards our local infrastructure. This is the way it needs to happen. We need this to go forward. Thank you, commissioners, for, uh, doing what you can at this point to make this go forward, uh, in November. I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, good morning. Rick DeSantis, eight-two-two-four Pompano Street, Navarre. Um, good morning. First and foremost, my sincerest thanks and the recognition, gentlemen. If I may make, put forward to the board some humblest ideas with regards to the five-year period, the excess that may due to the statutes which were mentioned prior. Um, one of the things that enabled me to enable the corporation on Wall Street after the attacks to continue to be an ongoing entity was the fact that I had set up some reserve funds. And trust me, after the attacks, without having a building, not knowing where the employees were, how many were alive, or how many were dead, I didn't have them come back for two months. But having reserves, and that's the subject that I wanna bring forward, and these numbers are very simple, whether they're billions, millions, or hundreds of thousands, they're simple to add and simple to subtract. We're, suggestion of five years, because we're looking at fifty-five million cost at twelve a year, it's simply sixty, and the concern is in excess because of the five year, you can't break it up into increments. We have, and I have heard in the past, the lack of funds or reserves with regards to things, any, uh, from beach reserves or beach, uh, renourishment and things of that matter. And the chairman, of course, has always spoken to the exactness of having these things in separate pots, so there's no commingling of funds, and it's a simple amount of money, if you do the math, fifty-five, five years, five million left over. Um, I would like to suggest that it would be set up into a pot. We start looking at reserves, because we are in an area, we have suffered from hurricanes, and there's nothing worse than being in an emergency and not being able to respond to it. So in going forward and looking at this excess, you would end up with the excess if the costs don't overrun. I would just ask that you would look at reserves going forward in the future?
Thanks, sir. And, uh, Florida statute dictates what we do, and those reserves will be dedicated to that building by law.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. Name and address, please, for the record.
Is it on now? Sandra Cantu, ninety-five-seventy-seven Highway Ninety East, Milton. A contract is designed so that both sides know what's expected and what- A contract is designed so that both sides know what's expected and what's going to be paid for that. We jokingly talk about, well, yeah, it's $50 million, but we know that costs overrun all the time. Well, I'm not naive to, to think that you're never going to misjudge things. But if you're used to operating with buildings that are worth $50 million, then you know how to provide enough money to, to do the job that you're supposed to do at the price you're supposed to do it. What I would ask is that instead of laughing and winking about, well, you know, we know there're going to be cost overruns, as Mr. Cole said, we are going to hold your feet to the fire, and we expect you to hold the contractor's feet to the fire in getting the price that is agreed upon. And, and forget about this, $50 million, but whoa, well, it's going, actually going to cost $10 million more than that, you know, and, and we can't get around that. We need to make sure that the company that we contract with is reputable and knows what they're doing, and it's not going to be an increase in price that we're going to have to pay. Thank you.
One comment, and then Commissioner Cole. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am, and we don't engage in, we do fixed-price contracts, but that's, that speaks to that same point you just brought up. Commissioner Cole.
Ms. Cantu, we, we had this problem a while back with pre, previous boards, and Commissioner Salter, myself, Commissioner Lynch was on the board at the time, I think Commissioner Gooden was on the board, well, I know he was at the time, where we seen this a lot from contractors, low bidding, and then coming back with change orders. And basically, we put our foot down. When it's something that absolutely cannot be foreseen or estimated, then, then, you know, we understand there has to be some leniency there. But we had an occasion where a contractor came back and said, oops, I made a mistake, that should have been a fire door instead of a plane door. And we flat-out told him, and you buy the fire door, because, you know, you, being that contractor, you should have known it should have been a fire door, so sorry about that, but that comes out of your pocket, not the citizens of Santa Rosa County. And I assure you that as long as I'm on this board, that's not going to happen. We're not, you know, cost overruns or change orders are not something I'm going to, I'm going to take lightly, and it's not going to happen. I promise, thank you.
Matthew Hargraves, 7074 Milton Court. I apologize, gentlemen, it slipped in my mind a moment ago, but I did want to let you know, on the issue of the inter-local agreements and municipal contributions, that this week, the city of Milton is going through their process, but it was on the consent agenda for the city council this week to pledge a portion of their receipts out of any local option sales tax to the costs associated with constructing the courthouse downtown. So, I did want to let the, the board know that that is making its way through Milton City Council towards a, a resolution that will at some point be presented to this committee.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else have anything to say on this particular issue before we close the public hearing and go back to the agenda? Okay, seeing none, hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We'll go back to the agenda. We're, we're in the administrative committee report. We've dealt with item number one and the addition. Yes, sir.
Did you approve of the ordinance?
I'm sorry, I did not, thank you. I move that we approve the ordinance without objection. Hearing none, it passes. Administrative Committee number two, discussion of a resolution providing for a non-binding referendum regarding the creation by state legislature of a special district for the Pace Fire Department.
Mr. Chairman, this is an item that we had discussed Monday. Sent an email yesterday to you from the supervisor elections, and she's concerned that we'll not be able, that, that her office will not be able to, to conduct this particular referendum on this cycle. They're going to need a little more time to, to put together a, a referendum on this, because the Pace Fire District does not align with the precincts. I believe it splits three, according to the information that I sent, that she sent yesterday. They had actually closed the primary election data, and those of you that served on the canvassing board know, they've kind of closed the books, and they can't go in and do them, they can't do the, the machinations, if you will, that they have to do to split three districts. So, we'll just need more time the next election. They, they, they physically can't do it. We got the letter, I think, the 29th, and they had closed the books, according to her, the 28th.
Okay, sir, so, we really just can't do anything with this one, then? It's been overcome by, by time, is that correct?
Yes, and, and I had discussed this with Chief Watkins, that this was requested to be requested.
Well, item number two, we'll take no action on. Item number three is discussion of the previously approved resolution providing for a non-binding referendum regarding the incorporation of Navarre contingent upon submission of a feasibility study. Mr. Walker.
I believe Ms. Gallup is here to speak to that.
Okay.
Good morning. Laurie Gallup, 1869 Flamingo Lane in Navarre. As promised, on Monday, I have copies of the completed feasibility study that I'm going to hand to you gentlemen. Okay, in the study, and we'll have this out on our website, too, incnavar.com, but in the study, it shows that our population has actually increased even more than we had thought, because we know that Navarre is growing and growing and growing, there's so much building going on down there. So, our population now is 42,300. Our seasonal population, when you account for our tourists, is 50,200. Those figures make us 26.8% of the county's population. Also, our taxable value is $2,744,000,000 plus. That makes our taxable value 26.9% of the entire taxable value of Santa Rosa County. Now that we've got the study, we're going to disseminate the information to the people. We're going to be having town halls, and then I hope this meets the requirements for us to be able to go on with the straw poll in November.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Andrews, would you help us with this, because this is a confusing issue for me and probably for a lot of other people as well, now that we have the...
I'm not, I'm not sure how much help I can give you at this point. I haven't reviewed the, the feasibility study. Is, is, yeah, the feasibility study is what it is, though, only, is when you had passed your referendum, your, your resolution for the referendum, the board had made it contingent on submission of a feasibility study by, I believe it was July 31st.
July 31st.
And, and just that, that was not submitted. Now it has been, so I just, I, I think you just need to, my recommendation would be, if it meets your, to just go ahead and, and, because you want to hold the, I assume you want to hold the election, and, and you would just accept the report and...
Right.
We've, we forwarded the resolution to the supervisor.
All right.
It's just that originally...
We moved that contingency or condition.
There, there...
Sure.
Originally, there had been a contingency, a condition on the straw poll, that we have this feasibility study ready by July 31st, but it's just that it took longer than anticipated, so we have it ready now. But we feel like we still have plenty of time to do the town halls and get the information out to the people, so that they can make an informed vote on November 4th.
Okay, so, our, our involvement in this is simply to, to approve the previously approved resolution providing for a non-binding referendum contingent upon submission of the feasibility study. We have that feasibility study. Have any more comments before the board? Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I haven't had a chance, obviously, to, to look at this, as none of us have, but Laurie, I keep hearing different messages out in the community. Is there an understanding from some of y'all that any avalorm taxes generated within the potential Navarre city would be moved into the city and taken away, taken out of the county?
No, that's never been correct.
Okay, thank you.
We'll be funding the city actually with our state shared, state shared revenues. The, the report will show you everything that we're able to do. Because of our high population, just simply based on state shared revenues and our franchise fees, and, and along with a few other odds and ends, we're able to actually fund a, a city and actually have reserves without raising our avalorm tax. But we may, as a people, decide that we might want to have one mill added to our property taxes to help us, should we have any disasters, or help us with hurricane relief and that kind of thing. And to get a reserve fund built up as fast as we can, because it's very important for us to have reserves.
Okay. Mr. Andrews and, and the board generally, my understanding where we are now is just put this on the ballot. It's up the voters of Navarre to decide their own future, and this just merely puts it on the ballot for them to vote.
That, that's correct.
Put this issue up or down. And the fact that we've just received the feasibility study doesn't really bear upon it.
Again, it's a non-binding referendum.
A non-binding referendum.
It's, the sense of the public, I think it is, it would take legislation from, from the state to establish the, the city if it went forward.
But the point I want to make is that our having studied or not having studied this document, and it was just presented to us as immaterial...
It's, it's, your action would not be an endorsement of the, of the setting.
Absolutely, it is immaterial. We wanted to know that this document existed and was available for the public. It does exist, it's here, and it's available for the public, so that's the end of our part of this, other than just to move this to the ballot. Does anybody have anything else to add before we...
If I could, also, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
This, the vote on November 4th is just a non-binding straw poll. And with that non-binding straw poll, that's just going to let Representative Broxton know whether or not the people of Navarre want him to move forward with the state legislature in the creation of a new municipality in Navarre. So, we wouldn't actually vote on becoming a city for an entire year. So, it's a very long, drawn-out process, and the feasibility study is just the beginning.
Okay. I'm ready to move this for approval or objection.
Oh, I believe you have a speaker.
Oh, I'm sorry, come ahead. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm Michelle Tucker, 2742 Noah Jordan Road, and I am here to ask for your consideration in removing this resolution from the November ballot. The PAC for incorporation has failed to produce this feasibility study within the promised timeframe, which was a contingency for your allowance on the November ballot. They did not formally present the study, or even ask for an extension of time until the 11th, which was this past Monday. The study in draft form was received on August 6th, according to an email from Laurie to the commissioners or to Hunter. And at that point, she referenced that they needed to do some editing. Editing by the PAC, first of all, if I'm hiring a consultant to the tune of $27,500, I would and should be able to expect that any proofreading or geographical spelling corrections would be done by the consultant staff. As to the geographical corrections, if I'm hiring, again, a consultant who is a renowned person in his field, being paid $27,500 to prepare a feasibility study, I'm sure that he has adequate access and knows how to use the resources that are available to him. By allowing the PAC to do any editing to this study draws question to the credibility of the study as presented to you today. You asked for, on Monday, an unedited and edited version of the study, and Laurie refused to present that to you. So, I'm assuming, and maybe I should not assume, but is this the edited version that you've received today? If it is, then I have to ask, why, if someone is so right in their heart that incorporation is the right thing for Navarre, why do they insist on continuing to do things outside of the sunshine laws, which they're not obligated to, to? But they do have, they have held secret meetings, they have presented misinformation, false information to the public, and they hold things that are of interest and of pertinent value to the people trying to study this issue. They hold them close to their chest. They won't divulge it, because it's a draft. Well, the draft is where everything starts, and from there, you build as a committee or an organization or citizens. You input your feelings and your heart into this, if it's to be a meaningful and truthful endeavor. And unfortunately, there's a lot of mistrust towards the PAC because of their lack of forthrightness. I have asked Laurie and her group from day one, I ask that you be honest and forthcoming in sharing of any information that you gather. The charter is still held close to their, their chest. They won't share that with the general public. They won't share it with anyone who does not subscribe to the PAC. Why not? If it's just a draft charter, and it's boilerplate, most of it, then why won't you share that with everyone? Why are you keeping that so secret? The budget that has been prepared, that was done by Trent Severn, not factual information. But yet, they publish it in a newspaper, but they don't disseminate it to you, so you can actually see it and study it. There's just so many things that have caused a distrust, and if this is truly the right thing for Navarre, I ask, why aren't they more forthcoming? Why did not they present you with both an edited and unedited version, at least to the county attorney? So, he could say, there's no change to the content or the context of the study. It is what was done, it's just in spelling errors. At least he is an impartial person that could validate that, he is the county attorney. But right now, the credibility of what is before you today has been challenged simply by allowing proofreading by the PAC.
Those are excellent points, and well, well-made. However, they're points that need to be made to the electorate. Then, the, it's a non-binding referendum. I don't know, Mr. Attorney, that, that, I understand those points, and please don't misunderstand what I'm saying. Those are very well-made points. But it doesn't, the question before us doesn't turn on that, on those questions, if I've got my arms around the question.
The, the, the action of the county previously, and I wasn't here, was that they, you voted to have the non-binding referendum on the ballot contingent upon receiving a feasibility study by July 31st. The, the feasibility study was not received at that time. The, I guess there was an extension asked for, or, or maybe not. But in any case, you've got the, the, the feasibility study now, that, I guess the question for you is whether or not that satisfies that contingency, such that you take the action to place the referendum on the ballot. You're not endorsing the study, you're not editing or reviewing it. There was a contingency, and the issue is, if that contingency has been met, does the board want to proceed?
Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that's a key point. We're not endorsing the study. We're not tasked to review and provide our opinion on the study. This is not a prerequisite under Florida law to put the issue on the ballot for consideration by the electorate. So, you know, I, I think there's, there's been enough talk about incorporation in Navarre over the past, who knows how many years, that, let's put it on the ballot, see what the people feel, because this is just, it's a, a gauge of interest in Navarre in incorporating. The, the straw poll will have no binding effect on anyone, on either side of the issue. All it will do is gauge the interest, that will then allow our representative to take up the issue, if he so chooses, in Tallahassee. That's my understanding, because the next step after this is Tallahassee. And that is really the first step. This is just a preliminary, kind of an extra feel-good step that we're doing.
It's a preliminary step that you have offered to take on behalf of the PAC when they requested it be put on the referendum or on the ballot.
May I interrupt you just a moment, please, ma'am? We've got the floor right now, we'll get back to you. Commissioner Cole, you had your light on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Considering that one of the caveats of placing it on the ballot was this feasibility study, and that the feasibility study wasn't done in the time allotted, even an additional time allotted, the consultant himself said, the beginning of July, this board extended that to the end of July, and it still wasn't done in a timely manner. I feel I could, you know, again, this is non-binding, but, but she makes a good point. The citizens are going to be asked to read this and make their decision by this consultant's information, which I'm sure is fair and impartial. information, which I'm sure is fair and impartial. But given that it wasn't done in a timely manner, I don't feel that it's inappropriate to ask for one of two things. Either the unedited copy be given to our county attorney along with this copy and this board that he works for direct him to read it and say yea or nay, there's no substantial difference in the two, it's just correction of minor errors and put that in writing to the board. Or the other caveat, the other thing would be that this consultant read the edited portion and put in writing that the same question be answered, yea or nay, that it makes no substantial change to what I wrote. And I don't, I don't feel that that's too much to ask for if this board and the people in Navarre are going to be asked to extend the date of acceptance by as much as two weeks.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Lynch, I mean Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Cole, I agree with what you're saying as far as the people do need to see both of those, but I believe that's between two groups, one wanting to incorporate, one wanting to learn more about the incorporation. To Mrs. Gallupson and that group, I think if you are not up for it and put out everything and be transparent, you're not going to get the vote that you want to see when the non-binding vote comes on. But that's, that's between the groups in Navarre, what you decide what you want to do or what you don't want to do. I think you bring up great points and that needs to be hashed out between now and the vote, but that's not something that we need to be hashing out here as a board, I don't think. I think it should, you know, go to the non-binding referendum. The state legislature will then start the process if people feel that they want to incorporate Navarre. But then does it not have to come back to a vote of the incorporated area or does it, how does that work? Wouldn't it be in the incorporated area and have to have a vote?
Takes a life of its own, it goes into the Florida Legislature and up that ladder. I don't think we have anything to do with it.
And my understanding is it does take a vote of the people in the city as to whether or not they want to be.
Yeah, but not a vote of this board, though. Yeah, just a minute, please. It won't take a vote of this board, though.
That's correct.
No, but it would be the people that they're wanting to incorporate an area, they would have to vote 50% plus one vote to make this happen. So this is just a very, you know, this is very early on in the process, but I agree with you. If they don't go through the proper channels, if they're not transparent, then they're going to be in trouble with trying to get public support on this. But that's between you guys and Navarre. That's just, I just wanted to add that. And that's my thoughts.
And my thoughts, Commissioner Cole made some excellent points, however, my concern is if we start directing our attorney to review this, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, like it or not, we're gonna, it's gonna be perceived that it has the stamp of approval of Board of County Commissioners and it does not. This is not an issue for us to decide. This document and the whole question of incorporation not to be incorporated is an issue between the voters of the Navarre areas defined in the resolution and then from there up to the representative, to go to the House of Representatives and through the other channels. So I am not in favor of instructing the attorney to review it because it's really not our purview. We're really getting out of, out of the channel of what we're supposed to be doing, what our function is. I understand your comments, I understand your sentiment, but it really gets us into an arena that we don't need to be in.
Mr. Chairman, and that's, that's why I left the second option, which would be simply to have this consultant write a letter that goes with this that says yes or no, this is the exact same document with just some, eyes dotted and Ts crossed.
But I, that would, that should go to the, to the group, not to us, because we don't have a dog in this hunt. Our job is to either put this on the ballot or not put this on the ballot.
May I? Two comments.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead now, we'll open it back up to the floor.
Okay, thank you. As far as this feasibility study goes, just flat out with the editing allowed or the perception that is, is now recorded, if they have edited this study in any way without having an unedited version for review or comparison, the people of Navarre will never know if and what changes were made. That's number one. Number two, with that point in the background, you made a resolution that you would allow this be on the November ballot with the presentation of a feasibility study. It didn't get presented in time and it was not, a formal extension was not asked for. So you're gonna go ahead and put it on the ballot anyway with them not meeting the deadline? And now with the question of the credibility of the feasibility study, the people of Navarre rely on you guys as our county representatives and to do what's good for the will of the people. And having a study that is supposed to be unbiased, that will educate and give everyone a fair and balanced opinion of what is to be if we should incorporate, now edited by the group that hired them, it just lays suspect. Thank you.
I understand your points and they're very well made, but you missed, missed our point.
No, I understand.
And I think, yeah, I think you heard all five of us say, we understand what you're saying, we sympathize with what you're saying, but that's not our call.
I understand that, I do, but your resolution is now the point of question.
Well, the resolution is, but you keep tying it back to our fingerprints on this and that's just simply not the case.
They are tied together by your resolution of May 22nd.
Well, you, I disagree with that. I disagree with that.
I think it's in the county records, the minutes.
Not the, yeah, no, 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 no. I mean, I disagree. I took your comment to mean that we had signed off in some way, shape or form the contents of this.
No, so you didn't do that.
And that was, that was the basis of my objection. That's the basis of my disagreement with what you said.
You just said, you present us a feasibility study, it'll be on the ballot. They didn't do that.
And that's what I was addressing, okay? Ms. Cantu?
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East, Milton. It may appear that I have no business, this doesn't matter to me, but based on what we talked about, about the taxes, for instance, that, that sales tax that we're going to be asking for is eligible to go out to all the various communities, cities, I guess, and whatever. So then it does appear that it is going to affect the rest of the county. If Navarre separates itself, then it's going to be eligible for some of the sales tax that's collected in the county. Is that not true?
A municipality does share in, in the formula in regard to the sales tax. I don't, I really don't know, haven't researched whether a newly created municipality after the imposition of the tax would share in that or not.
So that to me is the question, how is it going to affect the rest of the county, the fact that Navarre is going to separate itself or make itself a municipality? Is it going to be eligible for certain taxes so that that affects the rest of the county? That's my question.
Commissioner Cole first and Commissioner Salter.
And Ms. Cantu makes a good point. I think one of the things that we should ask staff to do, or I will as budget chair with our budget director, is come up with those numbers so they can be part of the equation that mixes with this consultant's information to know how that would affect the county in general.
Thank you.
And I would just add to that, that before we even start getting ourselves involved in an issue that is not ours to get involved in, that we ask the county attorney to clarify whether or not the resolution would apply to a as-yet-unformed entity. If the resolution passes prior to Navarre being incorporated, are they grandfathered, et cetera? That's the question I would like to see answered.
I understand, I don't know the answer right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Cole.
And through the chair of the county attorney, since this, we did make a statement to incorporate Navarre, that this resolution had to be, or not the resolution, but this consultant's information feasibility study had to be presented to or available to the citizens. If this resolution was appear on the ballot and that date was not met, would it be proper for this board, prior to moving this resolution forward, to vote up or down on an extension? I mean, it's just being assumed that there was an extension where basically the language on record says that if it's done by a certain date, it'll be on there. And nothing was said that I know of to allot for an extension. I mean, would that be proper protocol to ask and move forward with an extension prior to moving the resolution?
I think it's the board's determination whether, at this point, whether or not they want to vote to put the referendum on the, on the ballot. The prior, prior vote was to require a feasibility study by a date certain that was not met. The board could, could say that's a contingency that was not met, we're not going to do something. You can waive that contingency, you can extend that contingency, but it's really a vote of the board as to whether or not you want to put the non-binding referendum on the ballot.
Was that waived in any formal manner in the prior board meetings? I know we discussed it, but I don't remember if it was made in the form of motion and passed, if it was merely batted around. I frankly do not remember. I know it was discussed.
I think the only, the only discussion has been in committee meeting, the condition was placed, I believe, the 22nd and now it's just, just whether the resolution stands or fails based on, on the condition. Can your attorney explain that?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move that we waive the contingency requirement and forward the language to supervisor of elections replacement on the November ballot.
Do so without objection. We have a motion to waive without objection. Hearing and honor is approved.
If I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, since allegations were made towards me by Michelle Tucker, I would like to point out that in 2006, the Chamber of Commerce also had a feasibility study made and there was a draft of that feasibility study and I wasn't able to see that draft before the final came out. But again, one moment, please, because I was, my integrity's being questioned. Michelle Tucker also wrote Joe Mazurkowitz an email two days ago bringing up these same points and Joe Mazurkowitz assured her that there was no way that anybody in our group could do anything to change his report. There were no changes made to the report except simple edits, just like I said, calling East River, East Bay River, those types of things. That's all there is to it.
All right, thank you very much.
And I do appreciate you allowing the people of Navarre to vote on this issue.
Absolutely, we, yes, sir. Commissioner Cole.
Laurie, just, I think for the benefit of everybody to attach that email to this, make it available, it's gonna help your side, I think.
I'll ask, I'll ask Joe to write a letter to certify that this is.
That's all, I mean, it just seems to take everything off the board if that's.
Sure does, yeah. Just as open as you can make it.
And believe me, the good, the bad and the ugly is in this report. All of it's in here.
All right, good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. That closes the public hearing. That's not, yeah, yeah, we'll move it. Move, I move the motion without objection. Hearing and honor passes. And, yeah, let's take, let's take five minutes, please. Back in place, if you will, please, at a quarter till.
Let me make a quick announcement. Because a lot of you probably haven't been down here before, we're taking a break for five minutes. There are restrooms in the hall right here, but there are, there's a larger set of restrooms in the breezeway connected to the vending area over there. There's a larger set of restrooms in the breezeway connected to the vending area over there.
Can you hear me now? Okay. Make your way back to your seats, please. We'll call this meeting back to order. Where are we? Admin number two?
You're number four.
All right. All right. Administrative item number four. This discussion of construction of permanent restroom facilities in Navarre Park. It's been a volunteer effort led by citizens. It's outstanding. Mr. Walker, do you have the...
Yes, in your packet is... And Mr. Dabney's here. And at the last meeting, I believe, the board had asked Mr. Dabney to get with Mr. Gomillion, a building official, and start trying to see where we could work with the plans that he submitted, I believe, at the last meeting, to Mr. Cole, and come back to the board. One of the things is the plans were incomplete according to the building official. We are going to need a certified, an engineer or an architect to stamp the plans. We have to construct our buildings to the Florida Building Code, and ours are commercial buildings, and they require the design professional. We had discussed that it was a residential building. It also, it was a wood building. We're concerned about the durability and the ability to maintain a public restroom, and also the location was to the west end of the property as opposed to closer to the Butterfly House splash pad, some of the main activity. So those were some of the things. But the bottom line is, we need to kind of determine what the construction's going to be, and get a design professional to work with, Mr. Dabney and Mr. Gomillion, and work through that. Mr. Dabney may want to speak to the concerns. I know that he's talked with Ms. Royals before, and I know that Mr. Gomillion may have something to add to that.
James, would you like to?
James Dabney, 9200 Military Trail. I think the only thing we were talking about in the last meeting that I can recall was, you know, I brought it to y'all's attention so that we could get it to you and let you look at the outlay of the facility as far as toilets, urinals, sinks, making sure it was adequate for that part of it to, you know, be the amount of restrooms and facilities that was needed at the park. You know, it's no... Does me no good to submit a set of engineered stamped plans to you if you're going to come back to me and say, "Well, that's not going to work. It's not going to be enough bathrooms. It's not going to be enough hand sinks. It's not going to be enough this." My thing that I spoke was, let me know what you want, and I will go back to a licensed engineer, which an architect has to get it first. The architect sends it to an engineer. The engineer stamps off on it. We bring it to you and present it to you for approval. So, I mean, all I was trying to do is what you did in your same thing that you're doing with the courthouse.
Sure.
Somebody has to have an idea. The idea has to be presented.
Right. And the staff will work with you. Mr. Gomillion, you guys can interface and just keep us in the loop, but we... It's very rare that a volunteer group comes forward with a proposal like this, and I don't want to see us let this one go. So, to the extent it's possible, keep us in the loop, but work with Mr. Dabney, who's kindly consented to do whatever is required. And I've committed to make the District Four rec funds available for the purchases required to implement those plans. But we need to get the plans done, so if you could interact to the maximum extent possible, we'd appreciate it. And keep us in the loop as to where we're going, so...
Yes, sir. We'd be glad to do that. We would... Obviously, I think one of the things, as Mr. Walker alluded to, if the board has direction to us, I think the initial plans and understand what Mr. Dabney's trying to accomplish, and we want to help wherever we can. I guess the point Mr. Walker was making was that that design was showing a wood stud building, a typical residential-type design, and the maintenance, our maintenance folks and others have discussed a preference for a machinery-type construction for maintenance purposes, and some other question marks as far as location and things of that nature. So, we'll do what the board directs us to do, and we'll... There may be some of those things that I guess we're looking for the board to kind of give some guidance on.
Okay. Then I propose that this board direct Mr. Gomillion to work with Mr. Dabney for the purpose of facilitating raised stamped engineering architectural plans for the bathrooms in the Holland Navarre Park, based upon the agreement that Mr. Dabney and I have made, and I may publicly hear, that the cost of the materials will be covered by the District Four Recreation Fund, and that he will, along with volunteers, find people that will voluntarily do the work, which is an incredible, incredible promise, an outstanding act of just good citizenship. He's going to put together a team of architects and engineers and contractors to build this thing. So, I move that you work with Mr. Dabney and keep the board in the loop to accomplish getting those plans ready so that we can move forward, and I do so without objection. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, just to give staff a little more direction, I think we had spoken about the advantages on Monday to the concrete block or CMU construction, much like the bathrooms right out here. You know, they're very easy to maintain. They're low maintenance. If we do get a high-water event, the bathrooms wouldn't be a total loss. You hose them out, and you're ready to go. So, that's some of the direction that staff wants. Location, staff needs to determine the location, and I certainly appreciate and acknowledge the willingness of Mr. Dabney and the other volunteers to step up to the plate and assist the county in getting these bathrooms or restroom facilities built. That being said, I think we also need to be cognizant of the importance of the project so that if, over the course of the next 30 days or so, it appears that because of the construction or what have you, it's going to be easier for the county to manage the project, that we not hesitate to step in and manage the project and utilize our volunteers where we can. But the key thing is, we need to get these bathrooms open before...
Absolutely.
Next year.
Absolutely.
Or next summer, anyway, whatever the timeframe, the goal that we had set. So, let's keep an eye on that as well, and if the county needs to take a more active role in getting this project completed, I'm all for it.
Then we'll deal with that when that need arises. But right now, I...
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. James and I have talked at length about this, about the construction of it, and although I do see the benefit of concrete construction, I also see the disadvantages of some of that. And I'm going to allow James to expound on that, the way he felt like it would be better to be built. And I also want James to take credit, too. He just recently found a person that's willing to put a $2,000 package together of LED lighting and donate that, along with the other things that have already been donated. But, so, James, if you'll talk to us about the construction.
There's no need to, you know, to beat the construction around, because we're going to have to do whatever they tell us to do.
Exactly. Now, I understand that. My only thing to CMU concrete, just as this location is here, I walked out there to double-check it before I came up, exterior walls. That entire restroom is facilitated on exterior walls. So, everything, toilets, urinals, the urinals are actually, the men's urinals will be on the interior wall. All of your toilets, women's and men's, will be on the exterior portion of that building. So, if you should at any time ever have a leak in those water supply, you're going to have problems fixing it. It's not going to be a wood wall where you can go in, take down a section, put it back, and fix it back.
That's what these folks want down here.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
You're going to be the project manager for this? Is that what we could say from just a general term? Because we need to make sure that there's a...
Tony Wears is going to be pulling the GC, and I'll be overseeing the project.
But you'll be the project manager, so there needs to be a clear line of communication between you, Mr. Gomillion, and his staff. I have a restroom in my district that is not built a block, and I can tell you, that's the first place that people go. I like to fish and play guitar. Some people like to punch holes in sheet rock. I mean, people have different hobbies. Some people like to vandalize. So, we need to make sure that this is built to a standard that's going to last a long time, and whether it's a community project, a government project, or a private project, it still has to abide by all the codes, and it needs to be where we're asking permission and not asking forgiveness, because I've also worked in volunteer projects, and thank you for putting this together. But I've had them, and you get people who are a little overzealous as far as volunteers, and they want to go ahead and do stuff when it's not the proper time to be doing it because we haven't got the release from the project manager or the authority having jurisdiction. So, just make sure that there's that clear line of communication between Public Works and you, because we don't want to hold up this project. We want it to be there in Navarre, but we want everybody to go through the proper channels and make sure that it's built in a manner that we can be proud of for a long time.
Right. Now, and I understand that, too, and, you know, I've had my... Obviously, I've had my run-ins with the county and where I've sometimes done things without permission, but, you know, that's what it is, and that's behind me. I mean, I'm trying to do right, and I think this is a great thing for us to get done. You know, I think we need to look at both parts of it. I mean, I don't... To me, it doesn't matter how we build it. I mean, we can build it out of all pressure-treated wood, and it'd be the same principle of what you're saying. A hurricane's going to do what a hurricane's going to do. You're on the water. I have a $3 million piece of property sitting on the water today. When the hurricane comes, I have insurance for that. When it blows down, I will rebuild. When it blows down on your property, it's not going to make a difference where it goes, how it gets there. If it's down on the ground, you're going to rebuild it. Now, unfortunately, it's taken us 10 years to rebuild ours, but, you know, I think we need to look at every aspect of that. If it's easier to modify that bathroom, you want to go in at a later time and put additional fixtures or, you know, stuff in there, a concrete wall's not the way to go. It's twice as expensive to do anything later down the road. If you have to repair that wall, it's twice as expensive to repair it. You know, there's very limited options on running electrical. You know that yourself. It limits your options on doing numerous things if you ever make changes. So, I mean, that's my only objection to concrete. And like I said, I did not go... Aesthetically, I did the outside to match the chamber.
Yeah. And we can make the outside look like whatever it needs to look like. You make a good point about, you know, additions, future construction, maintenance, and that's what you and Mr. Gomillion's crowd can work through and bring it back to us. We're not going to tell you how to do it. We're policymakers, and conceptually, we're approving this interaction between you. Now, we have a motion on the floor without objection. Everybody had a chance to speak to it that wants to. Here it passes. There's... You guys keep us in the loop as you interface on that.
So, what we need to do is we need to just figure out, with Mr. Gomillion...
Yes, sir.
What you guys are going to recommend as far as concrete, wood, whatever type of construction that's recommended through the county.
All right. Item number five is recommend a letter of agreement with the Florida Agency for Healthcare Administration, ACHA, in an amount of $122,483 for intergovernmental transfers and authorized execution of relevant documents. We talked about this Monday, and the stuff is in the backup. I recommend approval without objection.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am. Name an address. Name an address, please.
Sandra Cantu, 9577 Highway 90 East Milton. I studied this information. I can't figure out what it's for. Would you mind explaining?
Yes, ma'am, I would. It's very complicated, and I understand your... It's very in-depth stuff, and we will get the staff to work with you, but we don't have the time to stop this meeting and go through. It's very complicated, complex stuff, and you're not the only one that doesn't understand it, but this is something that's necessary in order for us to move the county's business on down the road. So, if you would, please get with the staff, and they will help you.
Loop it, I ask.
They will clear up. Mr. Walker will listen to you and then direct you to the correct position, okay?
I think just in a clear manner, this is an arrangement that we've had. This will be the third year with Santa Rosa Medical Center as our... It's the county hospital. It's leased to HMA, and this is a mechanism that they can go through the Florida Medicaid and Medicare government, a portion of the state, and they can be allowed to charge or accept the reduced Medicaid rates. And we exchange funds in that regard. This is revenue-neutral to the county. It just allows them to take advantage of pricing with the state.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
It's revenue-neutral. I mean, they compensate us through a payment in lieu of taxes for this.
Thank you.
I recommend approval without objection. Here it passes. Item number six is recommend assignment and transfer of lease of the former driver's license building and property at 6089 Old Baghdad Highway to the Florida Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. We went over this Monday. I recommend approval without objection. Here it passes. Item number seven is recommend a bid in the amount of $1,452.52 for sale of county-owned property located in Patterson Town Road. I recommend approval without objection. Here it passes. Item number eight is recommend 5K run Saturday, November 15, 2014, beginning at Peter Prince Airport and ending at East Milton Park via Red Brick Road, benefiting Fair Association and Veterans Memorial Foundation. I recommend approval without objection. Here it passes. Item number nine is recommend the purchase of four replacement vehicles for the Health Department utilizing the funding from the FY 2014-15 budget allocation. I recommend approval without objection. Here it passes. Item number 10 is recommend writing off as uncollectible two Peter Prince Airport hangar accounts, which totaled $632.22, is recommended by a clerk of the courts. by a clerk of the courts. I recommend approval without objection.
Mr. Commissioner, I had a comment on that.
Sorry, go right ahead.
I apologize, and this is, when I read the backup data on this, this is two people that refuse to pay their bills. One of them skipped town, I guess, and the other one just refused it. He's still local and refuses. Why are the taxpayers having to eat this? I would say, send it to collections, and then, you know, make these people miserable. You know, why? I don't understand. Why, we're gonna set a precedent here, that, okay, if you don't pay your hangar bill, just say no, and, and the board's gonna, you know, say, okay.
Do we have a, a policy in place? 'Cause this is the first time I've run this in the four years I've been on the board.
Just because the, the clerk's office is recommending that the, uh, uh, be, uh, written off, that still doesn't mean that they don't continue to collect the bill. They're just writing this off of-
This takes it off the books, okay?
Off the books, and, and, and Mr. Spencer may not wanna speak to that directly, but that's, that's my understanding, uh, 'cause there's nothing that, that precludes us from continuing to pursue these-
Wouldn't, wouldn't stop Mr. Mr. Spencer from proceeding.
What it does is it also opens up the hangers for us to re-lease them. There, some of them have just moved out.
Mm-hmm.
The hangers are vacant, and I, I'll talk with our CPA and our auditor to see if we can, we got a collection agency on the court side, see if maybe we can get something going on trying to get to pay the back lease on that. Uh, we don't have any, anything to enforce them to pay if they decide not to, like we do on the court side, so, uh-
This will release those funds, though, so that he can turn it over to the collectors.
Okay, so there's a lesson learned here. Are we charging a first and last month's rent or whatever to make sure that we're covered as a county, like any other, uh, you know?
I don't think we're charging a first and last month's rent on these, uh, hangers, are we, Mr. Hunter?
I don't believe we do. We ha, I'd have to go back and check, but we, and, and, and you make a good point, and we'll, we'll look at that. Obviously, it doesn't happen very often, and, 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 uh, point of fact is, is the, the only other time that we've had this is when we've, uh, we actually have to go through an eviction process to, same as any other landlord.
Okay, I just ask you to consider that.
That's fine. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. All right. Uh, here, no objection, that is, that is passed. Uh, item number eleven is an ad from Monday, and it's recommend a proposal in the amount of ten thousand, five hundred dollars for placement of a large printer replacement of the large printer scanner in the engineering department, based on comparison shopping, and I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. Item number twelve, meetings, unless otherwise noted, these meetings below will be held in the boardroom, Santa Rosa County Administrative Center. It's a lengthy, uh, list, they're available online, for those here in the public that may want it, we'll provide you this list. Uh, I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes. And that concludes the administrative report. Next up is engineer's report, Mr. Blalock.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item number one, we recommend the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA grant agreement in the amount of three hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars for the rehabilitation of that east apron at Peter Prince Airport and authorized execution of all relevant documents.
I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes.
Item number two is a discussion of the bid award for the Villa Vanise Canal dredging project. I circulated, uh, a memo from me to Mr. Walker. We received bids, uh, yesterday morning, we had two responsive bids. We recommend award of the base bid in the amount of a hundred and fifty-five thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars to Coastal Reef Builders Incorporated as low bidder meeting specification. Further, we recommend award of additive alternate one and additive alternate two in the amount, as, and this is a unit price, for, for those two adds of thirty-five dollars and seventy-five, uh, thirty-five dollars, seventy-five cents per cubic yard for additional dredging of the canal entrance, and then various other locations that the owners may be asked to dredge, and that two alternates would be subject to our receipt of the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers permitting, and then, of course, identification of the funding.
Okay. Now, just a question before we take public comment. The thirty-five seventy-five, is that the per-unit price that the county's paying on the other work? In other words, they're, they're, they're-
That is, they carried it forward, yes, sir.
Sure, in other words, I, I wanted to be sure that they were getting the benefit of the bulk price and not some other-
They are, he, all three unit prices, thirty-five, seventy-five, cubic yard.
Okay, sir. Do you wish to address this subject, sir?
Yes, sir.
Name an address, please, for the record.
Dick Clay, ten forty-seven Aquamarine Drive, Villa Vanise.
Is your green light on, Dick?
Pardon?
Look at the, uh, is your green light on? It doesn't sound like your mic's hot.
It, uh- No, the envelope's not over. Can you hear me now?
Here you go.
Okay, it's me.
Yeah.
Um, twenty years ago, I went before the Commissioners at that time, um, to ask for an extension to my dock, ten forty-seven Aquamarine. Uh, I have owned that property and continuously occupied it since September the sixth, nineteen ninety-four. Uh, we bought it, uh, from George Norman, who lived there for a number of years. Uh, it needed some additions, one of which, uh, was an extension on the dock. We had, I still had a young child at home, so I went before the boards and asked for additional ten-by-twenty-foot extension to the dock, uh, for the child, uh, at home at that time. I'm back now because, uh, we have, uh, over the last twelve years, we have nine grandchildren. Um, uh, since two thousand and eleven, my wife has been disabled, and so it's just pretty much me and, and the grandkids on the dock. Uh, we have kept them one or more days a week, uh, pretty much continuously for the last twelve years. As one gets a little older and goes to school, as you know, another one comes along.
Yeah.
Um, I live directly across from Mark Malek's house, which is where the washout occurred April twenty-ninth, uh, thirtieth of this year. Uh, I'm probably the only witness to the receiving side of what was, if you will, dumped on Mark Bednard's property and mine, directly across from it. Uh, I see that camera shooting on me. I have, uh, I took some pictures, uh, that I wanna show you. Uh, I've been communicating with, with Rogers, been very helpful. I've sent him some emails, uh, with pictures, and as he has explained to me, um, I guess with the survey, the, at least the center part of the canal's gonna have a depth of about five feet, uh, which is, that's, that has little meaning to me. The biggest thing has meaning to me is that we get it back to where it was before. Um, the camera, this is August two thousand and thirteen. Uh, if you look behind my granddaughter there, uh, you'll see the boathouse and the building. As you look at that red building to the right of it, uh, are landscaping timbers that Mark Malek used to hold up the yard. And the reason I point that out is because I'm gonna show you some other pictures that I took the morning of the washout. Um, if you'll also notice, too, that, uh, in August particularly, uh, the water level, um, beginning at my seawall on, on just normal tide, is, is a couple feet, and it'll, then it'll drop down to, uh, maybe three feet, four, and then, next to my dock, it'd be six feet, and it goes all the way across to the other side, and it'll get up to where it's at least three feet deep underneath their boathouse. Um, about four o'clock in the morning of the washout, uh, there was this loud roar. I got up and looked out my kitchen window, which looks directly across to the Malek's property, and I could see the canal, and I think the weather department, uh, said there were seventy-one thousand lightning strikes, uh, that particular time. Uh, I could see the canal. Now, uh, the wife says I'm a little crazy. Uh, I've never evacuated for anything, to include Ivan, although she says another one of those, I'll have to ride down that by myself. So I've seen, I've seen that canal under all conditions in there. I had never seen water with what appeared to be just waves of foam in there before. So I, I go back, try to go to sleep, and the roar bothered me, so I go back on my screen room, and I look out, and with the lightning, I can see across, see across the canal, through the boathouse, uh, at about, little after four in the morning, water was hitting that red boathouse, which, by the way, managed to survive because of the pilings from the lift system there, although they, they did get pushed through the roof. Water was coming around each side, I would guess, probably, uh, somewhere in the neighborhood about three feet deep. Uh, a little after six in the morning, I took this picture here. So you've still got water running off of it. Uh, a couple hours later, uh, I took this picture, and if you'll notice, what you saw, uh, railroad ties and fairly high-level ground before are now missing. Uh, the, the two you see on the dock continue to be there on the dock. Uh, I went around and took a picture of the other side of the washout. You may have seen in the Pensacola newspaper about that pickup down in there. Uh, so, I walked out there, matter of fact, Mark Bednard's, uh, Mark was out of town. When I, when I go down there, Connie, his wife's there, and we're watching the water coming through, and it's coming through with such force, I thought it was large fish, but then we realized that there's gotta be, there's could've been those railroad ties. Uh, but, uh, anyway, it deposited, it was depositing a lot of things, and at the time, I couldn't tell because of the water level up, up to my dock. These pictures were taken, uh, this, this month, and this shows me, I'm standing on Mark Bednard's, uh, sand pile, if you would, which my guess is upwards from what would be the nor, the normal canal base, upwards of about four feet of deposited dirt, and it tapers down to about three feet as it goes towards my, my dock there. This picture here is a little closer. Um, my concern is this, I mean, obviously, I just found out this morning that the system they're gonna use has a bucket. Uh, my concern, um, is my grandkids. If you'll notice here, right behind Olive there, to her right shoulder, that's the mid piling. Uh, from there to the piling on the far end is normally the area where my grandkids fish, I let them fish out of, because it's, I can see the bottom, and when you go off the other end of the dock, it gets very deep. Uh, the problem is this, uh, just last week alone, uh, our youngest living here, grandson Henry, he is two and a half, Henry's caught eighty fish off my dock, so we do a lot of fishing. Uh, cannot cast where we normally cast out there, we have to, I u, use the other side, uh, and we're constantly hooking what I believe to be those railroad ties out from my dock, probably down about three feet. Next to my dock is some, is a large root system in there, which we hook. My concern is this, uh, if one of the grandkids falls off, uh, I'm going in after them, and the chances of me getting seriously injured by hitting something there is probably pretty good. This is what I ask. Whoever has the contract on the bid, that they touch base with me, and let me tell them where these things are in there, and I assume from what Rogers telling me, or has told me, that it's gonna be back to where it is. And, and that, that's, that's the only thing I'm trying to get some feedback on, which I've not, not had so far. So I don't know what all they're gonna do in there. Uh, first, I thought it was just a dredge system, and I'll go, oh, yeah, they need to know that there's, there is, uh, railroad ties in there, they need to know there's big roots. Um, I'm not even gonna address the fact I can't get my boat off, uh, uh, because of all the dirt, but, uh, I, I am concerned-
Sure. Rather than making assumption, let's get Mr. Blalock to explain to us what will be included.
Yes, indeed. Uh, the cubic yard material removal cost is anything that's in that, that canal, be it cross ties, trees, anything that washed in there is gonna be removed.
Any debris that's in there, they're gonna remove it?
That's correct, and, um, and we have a defined area that they'll start and stop in, and we'll certainly have the dredging contractor and our project manager and onsite people will, will get them, Mr. Clay.
And, and this area of dirt that's been deposited, it, it, it actually starts, it's, it's like a ridge line.
They'll deal with that, too.
Starts about ten feet out, they'll scoop that out?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I needed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else have any comment before we move on?
We got that, that's, that's emergency washouts, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Jennifer Byram, um, Aquamarine, just curiosity as to-
Ms. Byram, it doesn't sound like your mic is hot. Nope.
Hear me now?
There you go.
Okay. Jennifer Byram, Aquamarine, um, where are we on the timeframe as far as, um, application with the Corps as to the mouth or the entrance of Villa Vanise?
Yes, we are, we are in, uh, communications with the Corps of Engineers. They have responded back and asked for some additional information, so we hopefully will be timely with the award, you know, we've got to exchange contracts, bonds, and those sorts of things with a contractor, and we're very hopeful that we will be able to have that, uh, approval prior to his, uh, completing the project.
So, we're talking about this year, then?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. And as to the depth, have we, um, determined what depth at the mouth of the canal yet?
Yes, if we can put it back, the depth that we can put it back is what was previously permitted, and I don't know the exact depth, minus six, minus five, whatever it is, that's what the Corps is gonna allow us to do, we can't go any deeper.
You mean whatever it was?
Yes, well, we've had previously permitted this dredging in the past years, I just don't remember off the top of my head the depth.
But that's the same depth we're going through with this.
That's the depth they allow us to go back to under this emergency permit. Now, if we tried to deepen the canal and widen-
No, just go back to the original depth.
The permitted depth, that's correct.
Okay, I just don't, don't wanna use the survey that we used back in May.
That was a preliminary survey, just to try to quantify to FEMA.
And that won't, that won't be, it won't be used in determination later-
No.
-with, with the dredging?
Understand, the, the dredging that we have has a cross-section that, that Army Corps of Engineers has, have for a number of years, decades probably, and that's the section we're going to permit to put back in place.
Okay, but the, the survey that was taken back in May, that won't be the basis of it, will it?
No.
Thank you.
We're on, uh, engineering, uh, number two, I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes.
Item number three, we recommend change order number two with American Environmental Group, reducing the, uh, contract for our landfill gas extraction system by sixty-four thousand, five hundred and twenty-seven dollars and ninety-one cents, and increasing the term of the contract by a hundred and eighty-eight days due to inclement weather.
I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes.
And finally, number four, we recommend the construction plans for Pelican Bay, a forty-two-lot subdivision located in Working District Five.
I recommend approval without objection. Here, none, it passes.
And that concludes engineers.
Thanks, sir. Public Services, Commissioner Lynch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have three items. First item is recommend scheduling a public hearing on a proposed ordinance consolidating the Electrical Board and the Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We discussed this on Monday, and I will move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item two is discussion of the High Water Mark Initiative developed by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA. Um, again, we discussed this on Monday. Any questions, comments about this? If not, I will move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
Item three, recommend acceptance of the Florida Animal Friend Grant in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for continuation of spay neuter program requiring no local match, and I'll move approval of that without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And that concludes Public Services.
Public Works Committee, Commissioner Williamson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have two items today on the agenda. The first is recommend elimination of working districts designation and distribution of annual allocation of paving slash resurfacing, funding by commission, election district with fifty percent allocated equally among the districts, and fifty percent allocated to, on prorated proportion of road miles within the individual district. We had some good conversation on this on Monday. I would recommend that we, um, move approval without objection.
Here, none, it passes.
And Mr. Salter, we'll see about that plane, for you to be able to, uh, fly around the north end of the county and look at all those roads.
I heard he wanted a helicopter.
Two-seater will be fine.
Two-seater, okay.
Helicopter.
We'll let your grandson drive. Uh, recommend number- Recommend number, the item number two is recommend request of no parking zone on Casa de Ora to be effective on weekdays, Monday through Friday, from six AM to four PM. I'd like to recommend approval without objection.
Here none, passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Budget Fiscal Management Committee, Commissioner Cole.
Thank you. Item number one is recommend bid in the amount of forty-eight thousand eighty-five dollars from Thompson Cat Rental Store for one front mounted self-propelled room for the Roden Bridge Department as low bidder meeting specification. Do so without objection.
Here none, passes.
Item two, recommend inclusion of merit system increases for employees in the fiscal year two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget. Mr. Chairman, Lord, it's been years since we've been able to allot our, our employees' merit-type raise. And I'm glad to announce that, you know, county coffers are in good enough shape that we can do that, this, this year. And hopefully, this will help stem the tide of some of the employees that we're losing, whether it be the sheriff's office, or Public Works, or just anywhere in the county. When we spend the money as taxpayers to train these folks, we shouldn't be losing them. So I'd move this without objection.
Here none, passes.
Item three is recommend budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one sixty in the amount of sixteen thousand dollars to repair safety netting and add one hundred and fifty feet of additional safety netting at the Tiger Point Park from District Five Reserves. I move that without objection.
Here none, passes.
Item number four is recommend budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one sixty-one in the amount of twenty-six thousand three hundred and three dollars. State mandated Department of Juvenile Justice, DJJ, detention cost share project in the general fund. And I do so without objection.
Here none, passes.
Item five, recommend budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one sixty-two in the amount of twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and nine dollars carrying forward funds from the Law Enforcement Trust Fund in the Fine and Fortuneure Fund. I do so without objection.
Here none, passes.
Item six, but recommend budget amendment two thousand fourteen dash one six three in the amount of fifty, five thousand five hundred and ninety dollars for the local match for select section five, three, one, zero. Public transportation grant for replacement vehicles in the grant fund. I do so without objection.
Here none, passes.
And item seven is recommend county expenditure and check register, which I still need to sign off on and get to your office. And I'll do so, and I move that without objection.
Here none, passes.
That concludes this report.
County Administrator?
No.
County Attorney?
No.
Okay, open public forum.
Mr. Young. Cut in line here. I just had a, a comment back on the courthouse. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Jim Young, five oh four nine Basin Avenue. As we move forward, which means tomorrow on this new judicial facility, I think it's a necessity that the Board of County Commissioners consider an education-type program for the citizens, for the voters of Santa Rosa County. Placing on the website is one thing. Maybe, I got a general idea that, you know, the ballot referendums that are gonna be on there, obviously, the tax issue, the sales tax referendum is, is black and white. It's a simple thing. Then we'll have three more referendums as far as site selection is concerned. And I think it's incumbent upon the county to make sure the voter understands that he needs to vote on all three. Now, you can't tell a man to vote. He can walk away from it. But from an educational standpoint, and, and from an explanation standpoint, you know, this is gonna be a unique event on a ballot for Santa Rosa County. And I don't think the county would be doing its voters justice if it didn't take it and try to explain it in simple terms, maybe in the print media, including the Pensacola News Journal, of our press, Gulf Breeze, Press Gazette, and Milton. And at least make the effort to, to put the facts out there and eliminate some of the fiction, and do your best to clarify to the voters exactly what's happened in this unique situation. That was my first statement, for your consideration. Number two, I wanted to make a statement, and, and that's all it is, is a statement, a comment. But as you, as you obviously are nearing the end of the budget process, you know, I had the pleasure, or the insanity, I'm not sure, of taking over a business in nineteen seventy-seven with nine employees, ended up thirty years later with fourteen locations in five different states, twelve hundred employees, and six or seven hundred fleet of vehicles. We, as we grew those businesses, we attempted to define ourselves as the preferred place of employment within our industry. I would like to see that become the benchmark for Santa Rosa County, meaning government employees. In your industry, I would like to see Santa Rosa County and its leaders adopt at least an attitude, if not a written concept, of being the preferred place of employment. That is the way to, when you have four or five openings for a job, instead of getting six applicants because you're paying minimum wage, you get sixty applicants. If you adjust, not just pay, but culture and all the other things it takes to be a good employer, to strive to be the preferred place of employment. It actually saves money in the long term. It, it creates a culture inside the organization that you are measured by your successes and not your failures. Your failures are recognized, and they're learning tools, you know? I've seen a lot of organizations that get mired down and get, develop a culture of do nothing for the fear of doing the wrong thing, 'cause you'll only be criticized. I'll shut up right there, because I see our county, in the last four or five years, I've seen some of that, what I call degradation in organization. And I, I, you know, there's a lot of great people that work for Santa Rosa County. I have the opportunity to work with a lot of them. But I get a lot of yes and no answers, and not a lot of discussion. And that comes from the fear of saying the wrong thing, so they say nothing. They don't help you develop solutions because they're afraid it may be used against them. That doesn't happen in an organization that is the preferred place of employment. So I'll leave that thought with you for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandra Cantu, ninety-five seventy-seven Highway Ninety East, Milton, Florida. I feel the need to address the behavior of the board, in particular, the chair. I offer this opportunity to the chair to acknowledge his inappropriate treatment when I requested to comment on an agenda item during the last meeting. He ignored me. This is not the first time I felt disrespected by the board. I have been threatened with removal by the deputy for asking a question about an agenda item. What is greater concern to me is the fact that no other board member said anything. By this lack of action, they encouraged a bully. It is difficult to think that not one member of the board was willing to stand up for this, for professionalism on the board. I was heartened after a previous incident several months ago, when two citizens spoke up on my behalf in a similar incident. Those two women are on the ballot for Board of County Commissioners. Maybe that's an example of, of their willingness to stand up for something. It's time for elected officials to be respectful of the voters and open up, open to our input. I offer you this opportunity, sir.
Thank you very much. And to the extent that you feel you've been bullied, I think the entire board apologizes. However, it's a two-way street. If you want to come and participate, and the entire public is invited to come and participate, you need to understand that, that there's rules of decorum, that we don't try to talk over one another, and you wait your turn to have a, to have a comment. You can't just make a comment without first being recognized. And I think you have to admit that we've been generous in recognizing you, even when you run long and, and have not prepared yourself because you, you didn't look at the backup. But nobody is intentionally bullying you, and I'm sorry you feel like you've been bullied. And it's, if that is your perception, I'll apologize. No one has intentionally bullied you as an individual. What we attempt to do is maintain decorum and keep on the topic that we're dealing with, and reserve just generalized comments for this place. This, this part of the agenda is the, the proper forum for anything you wanna talk about. But to bring up an, an item and then start off on a different subject is inappropriate. And when that happens, we stop not just you, but anybody that does that, and ask them to come back to the subject. So if that made you feel bullied, then, I'm sorry, that was your perception. It's not a matter of bullying, it's a matter of maintaining decorum and staying on course so that the county's business is taken care of in a businesslike manner, instead of just drug out for, you know, extended periods of time with comments that aren't relevant to the subject at hand. I won't say irrelevant comments, but comments that don't pertain to what we were talking about. So when that happens, it's not just you, but anybody that does that is gonna be asked to come back to the subject.
I would ask you to give me an example of a time when I asked a question about something that was off-subject. Never have.
Okay. Then we'll just differ on that. But, but to the extent that you feel like you've been bullied, I sincerely apologize.
I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Wallace Mahoot, fifty-five hundred Cox Road, Milton, Florida. I know for a fact that at Monday's meeting, Sandra stood there probably for ten minutes without anybody recognizing her to, to speak on a particular item, and then you went to break. So that is an example of what does happen. And she was there to speak on a specific item, and she stood there and waited while she was being totally ignored. My next question has to do with, I had sent a public information request to Mr. Roy Andrews. I did not get the answer I was expecting. So I will ask those questions of him today in the public forum. Mr. Andrews, you brought an assistant with you to assist you in your current county position as attorney. Is that correct?
Excuse me, yes.
What is her salary, please?
I don't have that figure. It's available. It was furnished to Mrs. White, I think, who published it in the newspaper. So I really don't know exactly.
Mr. Walker, do you know what her salary is?
I don't know off the top of my head. It seemed like the base salary was about forty-three thousand dollars.
That's, that would be my recollection.
And I can't recall what, what the total package was, but I think it's forty-three thousand dollars annually for a salary.
Okay. And then, an assistant to Angie Jones was left behind when Angie resigned. That would be Sheila Taylor. Is she still an assistant to the attorney?
No.
No. Ms. Taylor's been moved to the Grants Department to assist with the, the Grants Coordinator. We had eliminated a position a number of years ago. And also, Ms. Taylor is responsible for the administration of the Health Care Reform Act or Responsibility Act, whereby she has to administer that program, which she's done for about two and a half years. And, and we've, we've funded that with the money that we've, we've saved in that liability.
And what was her former salary, and is she still receiving that salary in her new position?
She is.
What was her former salary?
I wanna say around forty-three thousand dollars.
And Mary Beth Andrews, who was the assistant to Mr. Dan Heiser, is, where is she?
She's still employed by Santa Rosa County.
As?
As the same position that she was in previously.
Okay, so now you have two assistants.
I think that's correct.
Okay.
If I had right.
What is Mary Beth's salary?
I don't know.
Does anybody know?
Well, I think the county administrator can give us a ballpark figure, but the point, one of the points that I think everybody needs to understand is that Santa Rosa County is closing in on a hundred and sixty thousand people, and most of the counties that size have a county attorney and two assistant county attorneys, so.
I think Okaohosa has one.
Yeah.
And Mr. Andrews, your salary is a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars?
That I know, that's correct.
Okay. And do we all realize that that is more than Pam Bondi, the Attorney General for the state of Florida, is making?
I don't know what Ms. Bondi makes.
She makes less than you. Okay, thank you.
Ma'am, let me, while you're here, clarify what a public record request is. It's a request for a document, and you made a public record request for me for a copy of a contract for my assistant, and I think you identified Wanda Pitts. There was no such document. I responded promptly and completely that there is no such document. Now, you are not, a public record request is not a question to a public official that, that is to obtain some type of information. Information that's available to you will be furnished. Any public records you make will be promptly and completely responded to. Thank you.
I just wanna clarify that it was pretty clear what I was asking for.
No, it wasn't. You asked for a contract, and there was no contract. Now, if you wanted to ask all of these questions, you can do that in this forum, and I'll be happy to, to address them. But that's not part of a public records request. And you, and if you ask something that's not asking for a public records, you'll get a request, a response that either says this is a public record, or no such record exists, which is what you received.
Next time, I will be perfectly clear. I will write it in in crayon. I will give you definitions.
Well, I appreciate all the help that you can give me, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have just a minute. I know everybody's ready to go, but I've had, I've reviewed the Hock presentation, and I want the commissioners to be aware, right now, we have about a hundred and eleven employees in the, in the courthouse. We're gonna add county, the public defender's office, and state attorney, and guardian ad litem. That's gonna make our employees a total of about two hundred and sixty-six employees that will be working at the new facility. The parking spots in Milton are two hundred and twenty-five. We're forty short right there. We've got to be aware of this. So when we do move into the new courthouse, if that happens to be the facility that is picked, that we don't start out with forty parking spots short.
Well, that also needs to be brought up, that those, those are, those do not count the public parking across the street or the on-street parking.
I understand that.
Okay, just as long as we all have that. The public might not understand that those at home.
But that will run some of our employees over there. In January, we have a jury that's gonna come in with three hundred jurors. We have jury selection every other week that runs from ninety to a hundred and sixty jurors that are coming, not including the other individuals that are using our facility. So we just need to be aware of an issue that we will, that's gonna have to be addressed if the downtown site gets picked. And I just want y'all to be aware that that, that'll come up.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything else to come forth, Board? We are adjourned.